Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of January 23, 2017. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the chamber in accordance with L.B. 898, but before we begin the regular meeting, we have a couple of special presentations today, starting with the Mayor's Award of Excellence. Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Chairperson, how are you?
Well, thank you.
Members of the council, good afternoon. The Mayor's Award of Excellence for December is being presented to a Startran bus operator, Jason Stegie, who's here today with us. He's nominated by Bus Operations Superintendent Mike Weston in the category of Valor for his heroic actions occurring last November 3rd. At about 6:00 that evening, Jason was driving a handy van north on 9th Street in heavy traffic, and as he reached A Street, he saw a child, about two or three years old, wander into his traffic lane. Jason stopped abruptly to block traffic, honked his horn, and his van was nearly hit from behind. He jumped out of his van to protect the child, as the toddler was almost hit by another car in the adjacent lane, whose driver did not see the child. Jason shepherded the child to safety and to the child's brother, who then came to claim him. Jason then took the time to even calm the driver of the vehicle that nearly hit the child before he himself left the scene. Jason's act was witnessed by several citizens, including one who praised his actions in a Facebook post. She wrote, "Witnessed what could have been a horrific accident that could happen to anyone." She goes on to describe how the child ran out into the traffic and said, "The bus driver stopped his bus and ran out after the child, but not before the child got into the next lane. The woman in the second lane had no way she could have seen what was coming, but my best guess is she saw the bus stop unexpectedly and slammed on her brakes." Weston said, "We feel Jason's heroic actions that day saved the child from a potential cata- catastrophic event." So it's my great pleasure today to present Jason Stegie. Did I pronounce it right? All right. With the Mayor's Award of Excellence for October, please join me in congratulating him for his quick statement.
I'd also like to invite, I'm Mickey Esposito, Director of Public Works and Utilities, and I'd also like to invite Mike Davis up to give a few remarks, but this was an incredibly heroic act on your part, Jason. I really appreciate your quick response and also taking action for this child, but then the compassion you showed to other passengers who were dealing with it. You know, we expect a certain high level of service from our public employees, but there really is no higher level of service than saving a life, and this is incredible, what you were able to do, particularly for the life of a child.
Thank you.
So thank you very much. Mike Davis is going to come up and...
My wife's Jenny's here, my son Jack, and my mother Janice is also here. So I'm just glad the kid's okay.
And I'll just add that I'm impressed with Jason and his decisive action in response to this life-threatening situation. And not only that, but Jason's humility and his desire for safety. I congratulate Jason for receiving this award, and I'm glad that he's an employee of the City of Lincoln and part of the Startran team, so thank you, Jason.
Thank you so much. We have another special presentation today. Chief Blimeister would like to come forward.
Thank you for the opportunity to come and present this today. I just want to read a little bit here about the actions of Angela Sergeant Junker and Officer Gilland, and kind of describe why Angela's getting this award today. And I also want to tell you that it took some convincing. Angela doesn't want to be the focus of all of this attention today, but as you can see from all of her coworkers and peers that have come to support her, I believe that it's really important for all of you, for them, to know the outstanding service and the outstanding work done by Angela. November 29th of 2015, 8:45 PM, Sergeant Brad Junker was on duty covering the Northeast Team. He received a citizen complaint of a suspicious vehicle possibly with stolen plates in the area of 73rd and Adams. He arrived at the address given, located the vehicle, parked in the drive, and noticed it was occupied by two different males. He advised dispatch of his findings and made contact with the driver. During his conversation, interaction with the driver, the passenger exited the vehicle and entered the residence. Officer Angela Sands and Officer Matt Gilland returned to the Northeast Team following their calls for service and heard Sergeant Junker call out on the wanted vehicle. Finding it odd that he would be out on this vehicle alone, both officers proceeded to Sergeant Junker's location to provide assistance. Meanwhile, Sergeant Junker confirmed the plates on the car were in fact stolen, but he also knew he was outnumbered by the driver and the occupant of the vehicle, as well as anyone else currently inside the residence. He opted to keep in contact with the driver very low-key and non-threatening while still investigating the situation. Still, his instincts told him something about this contact was unusual. Upon their arrival, Officer Sands and Officer Gilland stood by with the subject while Sergeant Junker ran further criminal information on the driver, preparing to at least issue him a citation for the stolen plates. Officer Sands also noted something about the situation seemed odd and began to visually check the driver for obvious weapons or contraband. It was at this time that Sergeant Junker learned the driver was also wanted on a felony warrant. He informed the subject of the warrant and used de-escalation techniques, both verbally and in body language, to prevent the subject from resisting or running from the three officers. However, upon being told he would be detained on the warrant, the subject made a statement indicating he was not going back to jail. He turned, and he began to walk toward the residence. Officer Sands placed herself between the suspect and the residence. As he walked toward her, she placed her hands on his chest, telling him to stop. Sergeant Junker grabbed the suspect from behind and also gave him commands to stop. The suspect refused to follow their orders and immediately began to fight with both of them. As the subject's actions became more aggressive and as Junker and Sands tried to control his movements, the suspect began to reach for something in his waistline. Officer Sands announced that he was reaching for something, and despite the fact that the suspect was larger than both Junker and Sands, they were able to take him to the ground. However, that movement allowed the suspect an opportunity to retrieve a handgun from his clothing, and he managed to fire one shot, striking Officer Gilland in the right arm. Sergeant Junker and Officer Sands fought to control the suspect's hands that held the gun, and both fought his attempts to turn the gun towards them. At this point, either officer could have chosen to disengage during this struggle for the gun, but both recognized their actions were preventing the gun from being turned on the other. They wanted to protect each other and the citizens, while Officer Gilland, seriously wounded, was able to advise dispatch of their location. Several more rounds were discharged by the subject, and later investigation revealed that Officer Sands had been struck by at least two rounds. However, the rounds struck and were deflected away from her body. We speculate whether or not it hit her vest or an item on her, on her, uh, uniform, her badge, but we definitely know that she was struck. Finally, an opening presented itself, and both Sergeant Junker and Officer Sands were able to seize the opportunity to draw their own firearms and engage the suspect, ending the aggressive and lethal actions the suspect had presented. In spite of having just been involved in a life-or-death struggle moments before and being injured herself, Officer Sands made her way to where Officer Gilland was located, proceeded to assess his injuries, and treat his gunshot wound by applying a tourniquet to his arm. The injuries sustained to Officer Gilland that night have ended his career as a Lincoln police officer. Sergeant Junker and Officer Sands exhibited clear thinking and courageous actions when a lethal counter was thrust upon them. Their mindset of teamwork, professionalism, and tactics enabled them to respond to this threat appropriately and in a manner that prevented further injury or loss of life. Officer Sands is a survivor. We're thankful for her service, the service of Sergeant Junker, who's also here today, and of retired Officer Gilland, to the members of our agency, and obviously to the community that they are sworn to serve. This is something that thankfully does not happen often in the City of Lincoln, Nebraska, but it did that night. And I'm proud to be part of this organization and stand next to Angela because her actions were truly heroic, and when taken in context of everything that was occurring, simply put, they were amazing. Thanks to her and to Sergeant Junker here, and we're proud to present her with the International Association Chiefs of Police DuPont Survivors Club Award. It's something that you've earned, and hopefully you can share that with her recruits, her coworkers.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay. I appreciate this. It's obviously a very tragic event that has cost me dearly as far as just stress and mentally, and if I didn't have my parents, Jim and Jeannie, Sergeant Junker, who I credit with just saving my life and being here today, and my entire department, Chief Blimeister especially, the support they've given me is what got me back on the street doing the job I love, so I appreciate this. Thank you.
We're grateful for your courage and for your service, and we'd love to acknowledge Officer Junker too, or Sergeant Junker, if he could come forward.
Yes.
I think it speaks volumes about LPD that there are so many of your comrades here in the back, and there are a few misty eyes. I can see this is job is a way of life, and that badge is a badge of courage, and you exemplify that. Thank you for your service, and thank you, Chief, for taking the time to recognize it. Give them a moment to exit the chambers before we move into the regular portion of our meeting. And for those of you who are less familiar with how we operate, the Order of Business of the City Council is as follows. Our clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those who are opposed. The applicant may, the applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating his or her name and address, and whether or not they're speaking in favor of or opposed, in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker, and as a reminder, the clerk has a timer that will sound when there is one minute left to go. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and those items that are listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue, not on our agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Agendas are available outside the entrance to chambers and posted online at lincoln NE dot gov. Parking passes are available with our clerk should you need a pass to get out of the garage just north of our building. And with that, would you please call the first item of business, Teresa?
Yes, just a reminder as well, due to the President's Day holiday, the City Council will not meet on Monday, February 20th. Our public hearing, we would request those giving testimony to please clearly state your name and address and to sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Our public hearing consent agenda, our items one through 11.
Okay, would anyone like to come forward and speak on any of these items? And we have some appointments today. First up, we have Steve Hubka, a face not unfamiliar to us.
Steve Hubka, 4210 Paxton Circle. Appreciate the mayor's nomination for the Police and Fire Investment Board. For about 30 of the 35 years I worked for the city, I had involvement with the pension fund, and for the last five years, I was on the board as a, as the finance director. And I look forward to getting back on that board as a citizen, and I'm well aware of the importance of the funding level of that fund, and I know several council members have had a very active role in trying to solidify that, and the investment board is a key piece of that, trying to get the necessary return with an appropriate amount of risk. So if I'm approved, I look forward to serving.
Thank you, Steve, for coming back out of retirement. Trent?
I'm really, I was really excited to see this because I can't think of too many other people that have more knowledge in this area and subject matter than you, with maybe the exception of John Camp. So, but I appreciate your willingness to come back and serve on this board. I think your knowledge will be very well utilized in this area.
Thank you. Look forward to it.
John and Jane.
Well, I too am excited. Steve, always appreciated working with you, and I know with your ascension to the board, you'll definitely make sure we get that seven and a half percent rate of return year in, year out. Thank you.
I understand that we just fell a couple hundreds of a percentage point short this last year, but the market's done real well so far this year, this fiscal year.
Jane.
Well, I'm, I too am grateful that you want to come back and share your knowledge and expertise with, with all of us. I thought maybe you just missed us.
Well, actually, there's parts of things I do miss.
He didn't say us, Jane. Notice he didn't say us. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak on any other item on our consent agenda, items one through 11? Oh, please go forward.
My name is Paul Lutomsky. I'm with the City of Lincoln. I'm a police and fire pension officer. I'm here to speak on behalf of Steve being an investment board member. Of course, I'm in favor of that. I look forward to his knowledge and guidance and participation in our committee, and I think he'll be a very good member going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul.
Right. Anyone else like to speak on this item or any other item on our consent agenda before we move on? Seeing none, please call the next item, Teresa.
All right. If not, we can vote on these items. Items one and two were introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second. Uh, sorry, moved by Camp and second by Jane. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Then items three, four, and six through eight were introduced by Christensen.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Roy and second by Trent. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call items 12 and 13 together. They're the application of Babs Incorporated, doing business as Piedmont Bistro for a Class C K liquor license at 1265 South Cotner Boulevard, Suites 38 and 40, and the related manager application of Michael Ricker.
And I just, oh, sorry.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
I would just ask of all the applicants under this liquor resolutions, if you could fill out the paper after your testimony, that'll help us keep the meeting going. Thank you.
Michael Scott Ritter, 9712 Andre Circle. Just, we recently took over the Piedmont Bistro and we're just trying to get a liquor license so we can continue to serve liquor.
Questions, John, and then Carl.
Yes, I'm glad to see that. It's a great establishment. Curious, why did you want to go from the Class C to a C K?
Uh, for the catering purposes of off-site catering possibilities that we're going to try to pursue with the Piedmont Bistro.
Okay, thank you.
Carl?
You've been open how long now at this location?
Uh, we took over on the 9th. We reopened on the 9th. We learned of acquiring it officially on December 23rd, right before Christmas, and then we've just kind of tried to put all the puzzle pieces together, and we were able to get open on January 9th.
And how's it going?
Uh, good so far.
Great.
You know, so it's been good. We're definitely headed in the right direction, so.
It's important to, to that neighborhood and to the community to have that, so thanks for stepping up.
Yeah, we're happy to be able to be in the position to help out, so.
Questions? All right, thank you for being here with us today. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, please call the next item, Teresa.
All right, next is item 14, manager application of Michael Estes for Chuck E. Cheese at 221 North 66th Street. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, Michael Estes, 1701 North 59th Street.
Welcome. Why don't you tell us a little bit about your application?
Um, we're just trying to get someone back onto our liquor license. We haven't had someone on it for a while, and I was appointed to ask to be on it. I've been with the company eight years, and a manager one.
Okay. Any questions from the council? All right, thank you very much for being with us today. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? All right, please call the next item.
All right, next is item 15, manager application of Kelly Seymour for Red Robin at 2707 Pine Lake Road. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Kelly Seymour, 2141 Southwood Place, applying for liquor license for Red Rob- Red Robin. Been with the company for nine years and recently appointed the general manager about nine months ago.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Any questions from the council? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right, please call the next item, Teresa.
All right, next is item 16, application of Warren's Liquor Works for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 36 feet by 45 feet at 3400 A Street on February 20th, February 11th, 2017, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. No oath on S D Ls.
Oh, sorry. Eric Baum, 3710 LaSalle Street. And this is just an S D L application for an event that we organize and sponsor called Tour de Brue Lincoln, and we have done several. This will be our fourth year. This is the winter edition Tour de Brue.
I'm going to share the date for the millions of viewers we have on Channel 5.
Yeah, February 11th, Saturday afternoon. We'll start at Moran's and head over to Cycle Works downtown for a bite to eat, and then we finish off at Imperium's Warehouse.
Great.
Foster Closet is the charity that we'll be raising money for.
Nice. Jane?
In the event, it snows. Do you have a backup date?
Well, the diehards will hope that it snows. That's what they want, to be able to ride their big fat tire bikes in the snow with all their gear that they get at Cycle Works, but we do have a alternate date for something that would be really bad on the S D L, and it would be the following Saturday.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for being with us today.
Thank you.
All right, would anyone else like to speak to this item? Teresa? Call the next item. Are we going to have a motion?
Oh, yes. I move approval of items 12 through 16.
Second. Moved by John and seconded by Roy. Discussion?
You've only been doing this, what, 18 years? You think you have a routine now?
Tour de snooze.
And this is really bad because we have an audience of millions out there, and millions, you know, it's just, oh, sorry.
All right, please call the roll.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. So then our next item is our public hearing resolutions. Item 17, approving the appointment of Brandon Kaufman as Director of the Finance Department effective January 30th, 2017.
Good afternoon. My name is Don Hers, interim finance director for the City of Lincoln. The mayor has selected Brandon Kaufman as our next finance director to succeed Steve Hubka, who was just here, who retired at the end of September. Brandon comes to Lincoln, most recently serving as a finance director in Topeka, Kansas. Brandon's schedule, by the way, is to start work on the 30th, and I'm going to be staying on for a few days, a week or so, while he's here to try to help transition through some of the, some of the things, and I know that Steve and I have told Brandon our willingness to meet with him as needed to help in this transition period because it's going to be, you know, it's a fairly difficult position to, to learn. So with that, have Brandon go through some of his background.
I want to thank the mayor for the recommendation and this appointment. Really excited to come up, and my wife and I came up yesterday with our five kids and were able to drive around the city quite a bit and look at homes and schools today, so we're really excited. So my, a little bit about my background, I have a degree in political science from Kansas State University, with a master's in public administration from Wichita State University, so you're probably wondering why there's a guy standing before you for finance who has a political science degree, and it's something that I fell into and I truly enjoy and found it a niche for it. So I've spent 15 years in municipal government, 11 of those in public finance directly, and eight years at the executive level in public finance. Most recently, I come to you from the City of Topeka, the capital of the state of Kansas. We had a great experience there, really orchestrating the financial turnaround for the City of Topeka. In addition to that, I've served, had the pleasure of serving as president of the Kansas Government Finance Officers Association for the state, and really excited to bring my experience to the City of Lincoln.
You're welcome. Any questions from the council? Cindy?
Not really question or comment, so as soon as I heard your name, I Googled you, just so you know. And Topeka, and I like what you said about the turnaround. I think that's really great. I don't remember the size of Topeka. Can you remind me?
Councilmember, Topeka's about 128,000 people.
Okay, thank you, so buckle up.
Other questions or comments? We're pleased that you've chosen to make Lincoln your home. Thank you for joining us. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
All right, would anyone else like to speak to this item?
Steve Hubka again. I'd just like to say how excited I am that Brandon accepted this job. Obviously, he's a few years younger than Don and I, and I think he'll bring some good ideas, particularly, I think he's worked with open data and some of those types of things. I know that he's making a big commitment, moving his family here to Lincoln, and as I talked to him before he accepted the job, he was real excited about all the things that are going on in Lincoln, so I think that's a credit to you and mayor and everybody else in Lincoln that we were able to attract a good candidate for this position, so. And I'd also like to thank Don for filling in. Coming out of retirement, five years after you retire, to take on what he's had to do is pretty remarkable and a big commitment on his part.
Thank you. And we agree. Thank you, Don. All right, would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right, please call the next item.
All right, next is item 18, authorizing the mayor to execute a multi-year contract with funding appropriations coming from more than one fiscal year CIP for the West A Street, west city limits to Folsom Street roadway improvement project.
Good afternoon, council. Thomas Schaefer with the Public Works and Utilities Department. I'm here appearing before you to ask for your support in letting us get started on This will allow us to get started on the preliminary engineering earlier, and we have cash flow and set up this contract over four years, I believe it is, to coincide with construction.
Questions, Jane?
Well, I just want to say thank you, Thomas, and the whole, whole team, to, to take up this, the issue of West A, and look at ways to improve traffic, control traffic, and improve the condition of the road itself. I know you heard loud and clearly from the, the neighbors that this is something that is very important to them, and certainly for the, the whole safety of the community, and that area of town seems to be, be growing, and so thank you for recognizing that and, and bringing this forward.
No questions, Carl?
Yeah, I would echo what Jane had to say. In fact, we have an item on the agenda this afternoon for a daycare, and I'm thinking, okay, when those kids start the daycare, maybe as, as infants, about the time they're ready for kindergarten is when this road hopefully will be built, so it's, it's needed and we appreciate it.
Thomas, you mentioned that this would be getting started earlier than expected, can you talk a little bit about that and about the timeline that Carl just referenced?
Um, yes, so we, we plan to spend these next two fiscal years, so in sixteen seventeen and in seventeen eighteen, working through the preliminary design phases, identifying the right of way, identifying what permitting is needed, working with the residents out there on the scope of improvements that we're going to be proposing, how we can best accomplish that, what kind of construction phasing will be. As we identify the right of way that is going to be necessary to construct those, we'll be then starting to buy that in the eighteen nineteen timeframe, and then we certainly hope to hit the ground running either in the fall of twenty nineteen or for sure in the spring of twenty twenty with construction.
We've certainly heard from residents that it's particularly problematic when we have heavy rains out there and, and that traffic is difficult, so I assume that those are in part of the scope of work, but can you just confirm that?
Yes, yes.
Love that reassurance.
It, it is, it is a flat area and drain, doesn't drain real great, but we're going to come up with, I think, some creative ideas to handling it out there, and certainly the traffic has increased, and we want to get people through that intersection in a more efficient and effective manner. I know Lonnie has some ideas, and he's been challenging his team to, to help come up with some others as we, we address what's going on out there.
Great, thank you. All right, any further questions? No, thank you very much, Thomas. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? All right, seeing none, please call the next item, Teresa.
All right, next is item nineteen, accepting the report of new impending claims against the city and approving disposition of claims set forth for the period of December first through the thirty-first, two thousand sixteen.
Anyone like to speak on our claims? Okay, seeing none, please call the next item.
All right, next our public hearing ordinance is second reading, item twenty, annexation one-six-zero-one-three, annexing approximately thirty-nine and a half acres of property generally located at South Sixty-sixth Street and Pine Lake Road.
Wait for the planning director to come forward to speak to this.
Good afternoon, David Carey with the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Department. I'm here on behalf of Lincoln Fire and Rescue specifically as part of an annexation package that would include a lot that has now been purchased by the city for the purposes of a new fire station being built there to improve response time and coverage area for Lincoln Fire and Rescue. I'll show you the aerial here just to point out what we are talking about. For perspective, we have Seventieth Street, South Seventieth Street here, Pine Lake Road here, this is on the south side of Pine Lake Road, the area outlined in the black and white outline dash line is the proposed annexation area. Lot eighteen is right here, this is the lot that has been purchased by the city for the purposes of the new fire station. I would just add that there was a process to engage the neighbors and property owners involved both in the annexation as well as the surrounding neighbors. Lincoln Fire and Rescue took on that process to discuss with them the needed improvement here for a new fire station. Would not say that everybody was happy or completely in support of this, there were some concerns, specifically more from what we gathered with the status of the road improvement that would come along as well. It is acknowledged by Lincoln Fire and Rescue that coordination of the projects will be very important to make sure we know when the road will be done and when it will be under construction in comparison to the construction of the new fire station. But overall, we feel like this is, this certainly is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. I would also point out that the existing city limits in this dark black line clearly currently almost entirely envelop this area. Anytime we have just one more reason to close the gap on those types of situations, we feel like that is a good idea to annex those areas in. And with that, I think I'll just answer any questions you might have.
Okay, John?
Yes, Mr. Carey, thank you very much, and I don't see anyone in Public Works here at the moment, but on that Pine Lake Road construction, I know there's a concern of neighbors in the area that it would get done all the way over to the east there to Highway Two. Are you familiar with a timetable on that, I mean, would that expansion and so forth?
Yes, the, the plan, just so everybody knows, the plan is for that improvement to go, to go all the way to Highway Two, that is the, the full project from where it ends as a four-lane facility all the way over to Highway Two to the east. The, the general plan is to have that under construction in twenty eighteen, moving forward, and, and I don't, I can't say off the top of my head exactly when the expecta- expect- expected completion date is, but it is more or less in line with the construction of the fire station that is planned, so, like I said, we're really going to need to make sure that we're, you know, planning those out accordingly so that we don't have a one, one beginning and ending at the wrong time.
And I'd also like to say for my colleagues' benefit, I attended all the meetings there, and I'm also on the Public Safety Committee that's working on the fire stations, and they were very good meetings with the neighbors and so forth, and the fire department worked very well to try to solve as many of the concerns as possible.
Cindy?
Thank you. Just, I'm just trying to put a timeline in my head, does, does the city typically buy the property first, or did you have meetings with the surrounding neighbors first, or?
As far as the actual timing, I won't be able to speak to that, that would be a Lincoln Fire and Rescue question. My, my understanding is that they saw an opportunity to get this parcel, it met their response time study of the generalized area of where it would make sense to put the station, and they took advantage of that opportunity to, to purchase the property, and then pretty much immediately really started to engage the neighborhood and the, and the other property owners, as well as planning for that purpose for an annexation, so, you know, I think they did their, their due diligence and did a really good job of trying to do it at relatively the same time.
Thank you.
Yep.
Before, more questions, I just want to clarify, this is a joint police-fire station, so it's not just L F R, correct?
No, it's just L F R. This is just L F R.
But that's how it's written in the staff report.
Um, I would have to take a look at that again, but.
This is joint. The joint's coming farther east.
Well, it says to annex a lot owned by the city for a new fire police station.
That would be incorrect.
I could double-check on that, I'm trying to remember exactly if this is the, the joint station or not. I, I guess the L F R has taken the complete lead on this, though, for the process of annexation and, and purchasing the property.
And, and I was going to add too, on the purchasing, that this goes through that three-year sales tax we added on, that would, those funds would be used to purchase the land for the fire station. And I think the joint facility's going to be more toward Jensen Park vicinity.
I'll, I'll double-check on that, I, I, I think, I think, I think you might be right, Larian, but I don't, I don't, can't, I'm not going to say that right now, though.
I'm just quoting your staff report, so.
I, I think that is right, but I'll follow up with everybody to make sure you know that.
Jane?
Is there an existing structure in Lot eighteen?
I believe, I believe there is an existing structure. I'm going to look at that. Certainly, these are fairly recent aerials, I, I believe that there's an existing house up near the road.
Carl?
Any ideas as to zoning of the other properties that, that are being annexed? Just wait to see?
Yeah, that, the zoning action is not proposed at this time, this is really the, the annexation so that public services, city services are, can go to those areas, so that is an opportunity for the properties, though, immediately, though, is to get city services, but the zoning change is not part of this.
Do you want to talk a little bit about the floodplain issues with this piece of property, because it seemed like that was a factor in the decision, the approval process?
Yeah, there was, the Beale Slough kind of runs through, along this area right through here, as well as there's a railroad line as well. So as you can see, there are some lowlands here, some of the property, some of the area on the property being purchased by the city actually has some very wetland areas. Those were looked at, working with watershed, they were identified as not being a real challenge for the, for the fire station, certainly, but in general, it's not a, not a problem for, for that project to move forward.
Whereas it might be more problematic for other forms of development, residential.
Correct, right.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Seeing none, please call the next item.
All right, next is item twenty-one, text amendment one-six-zero-one-nine, amending sections twenty-seven point zero-six point one-eighty and twenty-seven point sixty-two one-fifty of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to manufacturing, processing, storage, and distribution use groups to add assembly facilities as a conditional use in the H-four zoning district, and further amending section twenty-seven sixty-two one-fifty to require any parts used in the assembly process to be screened from public view, amending section twenty-seven sixty-three four-seventy to add assembly facilities in a planned service commercial development as a special permitted use in the H-four district, and repealing sections twenty-seven oh-six one-eighty, twenty-seven sixty-two one-fifty, and twenty-seven sixty-three four-seventy as hitherto existing.
Good day, council. I'm John Marko, I'm the vice president of Alpha Brewing Operations, and we're the ones requesting that we add this amendment for assembly to this H-four designation, and we plan on putting a twenty thousand square foot building up and doing assembly of craft brew houses.
Okay. Any questions? All right, I guess we're low on questions today, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? David, could you come up and just talk about the, from a planning perspective?
David Carey with Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Department.
Could you just help explain this text amendment?
Sure. The main point of this text change is to allow for those assembly uses to be conditional use, allowable use in the, in the H-four district. It makes sense because of many other districts similar to H-four already allow those types of activities. This would be to allow it in the H-four now. It's, we would consider this more of a consistency and cleanup item along the way, and it happened to have a proposal come forward that really kind of carried the, the flag on this, and it just makes sense to make the change.
Are there many cases throughout the city where H-four might be abutting residences, and is there any conflict there, or are you comfortable with this, the compatibility that this would allow?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with this, it just makes, there are a lot of examples like that, that, as you just proposed, and when those come in, we obviously through our process would take a closer look at those.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Last call for this item, if anyone would like to come forward? All right, please call the next item, Teresa.
All right, next is item twenty-two, dedicating land located on the west side of Southwest twenty- twenty-seventh Street, north of West A Street as street right of way for Southwest Twenty-seventh Street.
Good afternoon, Rick Payle of the City Law Department. This matters before you, in order to accept an offer of dedication from B and J Partnership for additional right of way to extend Southwest Twenty-seventh Street. This is, land was needed to be acquired and conveyed to the city to accommodate development of a childcare center at the northeast corner of Twenty-seventh and West A. The childcare center does not own the property on the west side of the road that was needed, B and J Partnership owned the property to the west, and they willingly conveyed this to the city of Lincoln, so need to just accept it as right of way. Thank you.
Any questions for Rick? Carl?
Yeah, so Rick, and, and working with the, the individual who's, who's wanting to build this childcare facility, then another company that owned the land, and, and with the city and different city departments, thanks for bringing it all together, I guess, so all the pieces are tied up and this, this helps resolve everything, is that right?
Right, I believe the applicant or the permittee for the childcare center had contacted B and J Partnership, they expressed a willingness, I worked with them in preparing the legal description documentation for the deed to the city.
Great, thank you.
All right, would anyone else like to speak to this item? Please call the next item.
All right, next is item twenty-three, amending chapter eight point fifty-two of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to the Graffiti, Graffiti Abatement Act to remove an unused volunteer appeals board and provide for administrative review.
Say that three times fast, Teresa. Judy Hollstead, Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. The item that is before you is an item that was created, to give you a little bit of history, when the council passed the graffiti ordinance back in two thousand six, it was anticipated that there would be a lot of appeals related to that, and actually to the credit of William Carver, who many of you know has been our graffiti coordinator for the city that entire time, he's actually a part-time employee, but he has done an absolutely outstanding job. He works with Lincoln Police Department every day on graffiti reports that come in and with the public every day, and as a result, the first graffiti board was appointed from two thousand six to two thousand nine and didn't have any appeals, and the next board was appointed two thousand nine to two thousand twelve, and we didn't have any appeals. And at that point, we had already kind of gone through the training for them, and so you train the board and then they don't get used, and so at two thousand twelve, we thought, well, we've got six years of history, let's see if we have appeals and then we'll appoint, and we haven't. And so we are now eleven years into the program, and we actually came across this as a discussion as part of the code cleanup that we do every year, and what was suggested was that we actually use a similar process that the health department does for our appeals for dangerous dogs and for food establishment appeals, and that individuals can appeal for an administrative review. Both the existing code and the way we do these administrative appeals both allow the individual to appeal to district court if they don't like our answer, and so we wouldn't be ultimately changing their ultimate due process on any of this, we just think it expedites it, and quite candidly, we just haven't used the board. So we are just proposing this change, that there would be an administrative appeal option in lieu of the board, and would be replacing that in code, so happy to answer any questions you might have.
John?
Kind of tangential, since you mentioned the graffiti board, excuse me, the.
Appeals, graffiti appeals board?
Yeah.
Dangerous dogs, food establishment.
Dogs, thank you, dogs, dogs. Senility is really setting in here, right?
Well, I was trying to think of what they said.
The dangerous dogs, have you had any appeals or anything on that, since that's been created?
We have, we've had administrative appeals, and we have reviewed numerous of those, very few of those actually get appealed onto district court. I would say we have maybe a couple of them a year, and we, at any given time, would have over a hundred dangerous dogs declared, so.
And I would say on the graffiti, that's just been incredible that we've been able to minimize that in Lincoln, Nebraska.
It's, it's been great, and it's to the credit of William Carver, he, he's done all the hard work on it, so.
Is a dangerous dog on those things?
He is good, he is very good.
Any other questions for Judy? Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right, please call the next item, Teresa.
All right, I'll call items twenty-four and twenty-five together. They are approving agreements for PCS Tower and appurtenances between the city and T-Mobile Central to locate a communication facility on a property generally located at seventy-four zero-one South Fifty-sixth Street and forty-three seventy-five South Thirty-third Court.
Jeff Karpatrik, city attorney, twenty-four and twenty-five are just two cell tower contracts. We have somebody here from T-Mobile to answer any questions you might have about these specific sites. What I would tell you from the lot department is, these are typical cell tower agreements, and you might remember that when we, we do these leases, the revenue from these leases, if they're on park property, they go to the park department, if they're on other property owned by the city, they just go to the general fund.
My name is Anna Sheeby, I'm here on behalf of T-Mobile, and these two agreements are to locate on existing monopoles owned by the city and on city property.
Great, thank you for being here today, any questions from the council? All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? All right, please call the next item.
All right, that concludes our public hearing, we can move into the voting session. Public hearing resolutions, item 17, approving the appointment of Brandon Kaufman as Director of the Finance Department effective January 30th, 2017, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second? Seconded by Jane, discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Caleb Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 18, authorizing the mayor to execute a multi-year contract with funding appropriations coming from more than one fiscal year CIP for the West A Street, West City Limits to Folsom Street roadway improvement project, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second? Seconded by Jane, discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Caleb Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 19, accepting the report of new impending claims against the city and approving disposition of claims set forth for the period of December 1st through 31st, 2016, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Roy, discussion? Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Caleb Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Public hearing ordinances, second reading are items 20 through 25. Ordinance's third reading, item 26, approving a development and conditional zoning agreement between the city and John and Judith Zakovic to assure that the developer will develop the portion of Lot 1 Wood Lawn West as represented should the property be rezoned to H3 pursuant to the developer's application for change of zone 16023, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Carl, discussion? Carl.
Yeah, this is an area that, that I drive by periodically, and since this has come up, have driven by it more frequently to just look it over. This, this is an area where Highway 34 and Northwest 48th Street converge. It's on the southwest corner of that location. It's a location that used to be called Grandpa John's Pumpkin Farm, I think. And it's, it's an area that, that doesn't, as, as we heard in testimony in our previous meeting, there's, there's no water, there's no sewage, there's currently a, a storage facility located there, and they're trying to get it zoned. The, the stumbling block seems to be over access, there are currently two entrances. When Northwest 48th Street will finally get built to that location and improved, that will need to be addressed. There's another driveway across the street that goes to a Casey's, getting those aligned will, will need to happen. But that's probably 20 or 30 years away. John won't be here, won't be here. So, it's, it's, you know, I, I understand that there's some issues in terms of future development potentially, but just the potential for future development in this area looks pretty limited, so I'm, I'm supportive.
Let me just ask a clarifying question, okay? Because is this, this is the one we talked, heard about where the landowner does not want the access policy imposed on this, correct? And by voting yes on this, what will that do?
That's a staff question.
That's a staff question, yep.
Rick Payal from the City Law Department. I believe if you approve the requirement, there'd be a development conditional zoning agreement that you'd have to then, if you wanted to approve the change of zone, make a contingent upon the applicant signing this, this agreement. They've indicated they wouldn't want to sign it. If you deny this application, you can still approve the change of zone, it just doesn't have a, any agreement that goes with it.
Okay, so, thank you.
Trent.
If I remember correctly, from the testimony that we heard, that the applicant's attorney appeared, and he said that they would rather rip up this agreement and just go with the second? Item 27?
But, they, they were requesting that the change of zone be approved without any condition that they enter into this redevelopment zoning agreement.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just making sure, because I want to make sure I vote correctly on this one.
Yeah, their, the applicant was saying they didn't want to be forced to enter into this agreement.
It's been a long snowy break, so, you know.
Yeah.
Jane.
Well, I, I am going to support this conditional agreement because having been on the county board, this is pretty standard and pretty customary when you are looking to make any changes, that you want to clean up anything that is, is a loose end, and so this is, this is very standard, and it is my understanding that with these conditions, they, they really don't get triggered until there is a use change, or if the property gets sold, but it, I think it just cleans it up, is, is that true, Rick? It just...
I think it, currently, it would require that they actually dedicate that access easement, and the public access easement at this point in time. The location of a particular entryway, there's two driveways, one might be closed, that would be something that would be decided at a later date, but the applicant didn't like being required to enter into binding agreements dedicating access before they actually knew what type of development might take place. The Planning Department felt that it was a safety feature to ensure future owners that they would understand what their, their rights might be in that development over time, so disagreement between the developer and staff, and they basically felt that that was overreaching on our part, we felt that it was appropriate. And your call as to whether or not you need this redevelopment conditional zoning agreement. If you do approve this, I think then you need to really clarify on the next item that it's, that the change of zone is conditioned upon entering into this agreement.
Thank you.
So, you said if we do approve this, then the next one needs to make, we need to make clear that it's conditional.
The change of zone is conditional upon entering into that redevelopment zoning agreement.
And so, as far as discussion is concerned, when I, I was, I was alarmed by what I saw, because we were hearing that there was no planned division of the property, this was purely speculative in nature, and I feel like it was a, that it's kind of a government taking of an easement, where the property owner hasn't requested that they, that they subdivide and have this additional access, so I, I, I'm not going to support this, this first one.
Perhaps provide a little bit of clarification, just so that you have it. As part of the process of getting to this point, there was, on the part of the Planning Department's work on this, there was an attempt to put an agreement in place that addressed some of those issues that if it were going to be a, a development in the future, we would try to make sure that we had the access identified and some direction on where, how that would happen. At a point in the process, it became clear that we didn't have that agreement with the applicant, and that is what, how that discussion then played out at the, at our public hearing. So it's, it's a point of disagreement, as Rick mentioned. So I, I think just for clarity, though, I think what, what you want to be clear on is that if you approve this annexation agreement, this agreement in the first item, you are saying that that would go along with the change of zone. If you don't do that, then the change of zone could be acted on without an agreement being in place, just so that we're clear on that.
Thank you.
Trent.
So, with the H3 zoning on the second item, that's something you could figure out later with, with, if it's the property sold to someone or a future development, correct? I mean, it's not something we absolutely have to do now, it's just something we could do now, right?
I would agree with that, yeah.
I think the issue that came up was that the property owner's property is well in excess of what, it could be divided without going through a preliminary plat or final plat of process. And so the concern would be that if you divided your land by deed and just sold it off, that a future property owner might not have that access rights there unless they were sophisticated, the developer, and negotiating.
But, but they would know that before they purchase, right?
Potentially, I mean, that's kind of a buyer beware situation if you don't have this agreement.
But, so, it's a private, a, a private plot of land that doesn't need a public access right now, because the business is, you know, basically storing boats and, and that type of stuff. So you'd, you'd have permission to go on the property if you were a client. Is there something I'm missing that we would need a public access for, other than future development?
I think the, again, going back to the process of getting to this point, there was, there was some discussion during the process that there may indeed be some development further to the west in the future. And it was at that point that we, on the planning side, got into the discussion about how to set this up so that we have some clarity on how that access would happen. Then we just, it became clear that we didn't have an agreement on that, and then it came forward in, in this form.
So it was, if they sold the properties, or one of the lots on the back end, if they sold that property to somebody, they would be able to come back and figure out public access at that point, if, or they could do it within their purchase agreement if they wanted to?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
David, the easement, there was some discussion that it somehow allowed people deep into the property, but the easement is requested over the gravel driveway that connects the two access points, correct? It just runs parallel to Northwest 48th. It doesn't go inside the fenced area, it doesn't go near the buildings, it's just because right now, there are two driveways, and normally in this situation, you would want to take it down to one.
I think there's two different things going on here. There's the, there's the two access points, and then that leads to the, a discussion about access management in the future when that might be necessary. And then there is the penetration into the site to allow for future access if there's going to be further development. That's, there was, there's actually two different things happening there, which is what we were trying to address there. But as far as going farther into the site, I think that, I think you're, you're correct in your statement there about how far in it penetrates.
And would any other developer in a PUD or use permit grant easements like this? Is this standard, as Jane referenced? I mean, that you would, that you'd want to try and avoid future potential conflicts by setting up this kind of arrangement so that you have the clarity you spoke of, that this is something that you see all the time at planning with other...
I think, I think, I think the, I think the point that I would agree with there is that we are trying to set it up so that it's, there's clarity in the future. I know Rick alluded to it, when he was giving his, his information as well. I don't think that there is a, we, we, we're not going to be efficient to compel them for that unless, unless the majority of the council wants to enter into the annexation agreement. So I think, in my opinion, it is good planning to try to set that up. But if we don't, if we do not have a concurrence with that, I think we can also move forward with the change of zone, and we can allow the, the use to occur there.
But in, in, if it goes forward without this agreement, you don't have the ability to try and manage the access in the future to ensure access to the, off of Northwest 48th and reduce multiple access points, because this won't come back in terms of, if we get the change of zone now.
I think, I think what we could, if and when there is an improvement to Northwest 48th Street, probably fairly far into the future, that when those types of projects come in through the approval process, there's always an, an, an interaction with property owners who try to identify where access points can be and not be. I think that there would be that opportunity. However, we know that, that that's not always going, when there's an existing access point, we don't, we, the city, don't always get the access points that we feel would best match our access management policy. That is why we were trying to identify some of that information in this, this agreement at this time.
I, I think I would point out that the city would always have the ability to come back and buy a control of access, or to buy additional access. So I mean, it's not like our hands are tied, our hands are tied without maybe other compensation being paid at, at a later date, so the city could come back in, and as I said, you would buy a control of access limited to driveway, and you'd have to evaluate whether or not that caused any damages to the property owner that would have to be compensated, but our hands are not tied.
And I'm just trying to clarify, this is, he's not looking to sell the property, he's just looking to use his own property differently, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Did, did the applicant's engineer indicate to planning staff that there was an intention to subdivide?
I was not part of those discussions, but...
We're asking questions that the applicant ought to be able to answer.
There was a map showing a potential lots configuration, that's, that's all I could say.
The problem I'm having with this discussion is Mark hasn't had a chance to say anything, and this, like, you guys are testifying again in favor of your policy recommendations.
I make a motion, will we reopen public hearing?
Second.
By reopening a public hearing, can, can you just speak to that for a second, Jeff?
I think you...
That allows.
Well, I think you can, if the question is, can you reopen public hearing in order to take new information that the body thinks it needs, I think that is allowable. I mean, it is a precedent that I would think you would want to use sparingly, but I think it is within the power of the body to do so. If that answers your question.
Okay. Do we need to do that in order to allow the applicant a chance to speak in this voting session?
Mr. Payal raises the point that if you want to reopen the public hearing, the proper way to do that would be to advertise, and, and I would agree with that. However, I think it is within the authority of the council to ask a question of a specific person who's in attendance without reopening the public hearing.
Okay, we're satisfied?
I withdraw my motion, then, if that's...
Okay. All right, the motion of reopen public hearing has been withdrawn, and would someone like to ask a question of the applicant?
If I, if I may, I do think that our planning department and law department have been answering our questions fairly in middle ground in answering questions, even though they're advocating a specific policy position. I, I would say that they have been fairly middle. With that, I know you have a question you want to ask, so go ahead.
I, I don't have a question I want to ask, but I think, I think you want to test.
The question was, is the, is the applicant, is, is the property owner in this case intending on subdividing this property?
And did they present a drawing indicating that the property was being subdivided? Who presented the drawing?
Why did you answer both those questions?
Which question do you want me to answer? The answer to the first question of whether, whether there's any intention to subdivide the property, the answer is no. Whether there was a drawing that was done in response to requests from the staff to show some things that could happen, yeah, there was.
Who presented the drawing, and who did?
Well, the engineer did that.
On behalf of the applicant?
Well, he was, the engineer was paid by the applicant, but the applicant has no chan, no plan to subdivide this property at all. And the access issue can be determined at such time as the Northwest 48th Street is, is realigned and widened, which I don't think anyone knows when that is. And frankly, when we met with Public Works, Public Works, when asked the question, which of these two access points would you eliminate if you had a choice, they couldn't answer because they didn't know, because they have no plan for Northwest 48th Street, they have no plan for access on either side of Northwest 48th Street, and the location of a public access easement would have to be changed in the event that there ever was.
But isn't that common practice for the city engineer or the county engineer to determine the appropriate drive?
We've already heard from the city staff that it's not common practice.
Well, isn't it appropriate at the time they determine which access point is the appropriate one based on sightline, based on safety features? When the road is under development or design?
At such time as the road is under development or design, yes, but that's 20 years in the future.
That's giving them the flexibility, as well as the property owner, to, to be able to, at that point in time, when that road is under design and the permit, that they'll have clarity, they'll have examined what is the appropriate sightline, what is appropriate safety distance, et cetera.
But it may or may not align with the public access easement that's being required by this agreement. Therefore, we are not going to sign the agreement, we ask you not to approve the agreement, because if you approve it and make it, make our change of zone subject to the agreement, we will deny, we will decline to sign it.
John.
Mr. Hudson, just to clarify, I think I, it sounds like you prepared, or the engineer did a subsequent drawing at the, to answer questions of planning, or how...
Well, there, there were subdivision issues that were raised by planning that I, I, I I don't want to go back through the entire litany, but there was a drainage way on the west side of this storage facility. And so the initial request was that we define what would be ordinarily called a minimum flood corridor, which is a subdivision term and is usually required in a subdivision situation. They wanted to use that as the defining line of the west boundary of the change of zone, which our engineer went ahead and did and then it kind of snowballed from there as to how do you, how would you subdivide or what would you do if? And there was a drawing that was prepared that showed, I think, three parcels. But at this point, there is absolutely no plan to subdivide. And so we don't want to dedicate easements and we don't want to give up access points because we have no such plans.
So the drawing with potential subdivision was provided as to a response from city staff?
It was a response to city staff.
They requested, okay, thank you.
But I want to follow up on that because the applicant's engineer told planning staff that there was an intention to subdivide?
There was a thought that if, I can't give you the exact words that were said because I wasn't present and I wasn't involved at the time. But there was at least a possibility at some future point in time that the house that sits there might be separated from the rest of the property. And so that's how the discussion got started. And so, but the point is, at this time, there is no intention to do any of that. And we ask you to deny this resolution and to approve the change of zone without it.
Further questions for staff before we have any last discussion on this item? Any last discussion among council members? All right, please call the roll.
Christensen?
No.
Eskridge?
No.
Fellers?
No.
Gaylor Baird?
No.
Lamb?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
No.
Motion lost one to six. Next then is item twenty-seven, change of zone one six zero two three, application of John Zakovic for a change from AG Agricultural to H3 Highway Commercial at sixty-six twenty-five Northwest Forty-Eighth Street, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Carl, discussion? Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge? Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero, seven to zero. Next then is item twenty-eight. Text amendment one six zero one three, amending chapter twenty-seven point sixty-three of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to special permits, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Second by John, discussion? Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Sorry, I just want to clarify something before I. Wait. I think.
What's that?
We've got that confused, I'm sorry. This is the alcohol spacing, correct? Yes.
Can you take the vote again, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
No.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
No.
Lamb?
No.
Raybold?
No.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried three to?
No, no, it failed.
Motion lost three to four, thank you. Okay, item twenty-nine, comp plan amendment one six zero zero one, amending the twenty forty comp plan to amend chapter five to remove the reference to Lincoln's theater policy, introduced by Christensen.
So moved. Second.
Second by Trent, discussion? Jane?
Well, I know in many cases we want to appear to be a welcoming city and open for business on all fronts. But I have to say that this policy is critical for the growth of this area. And I don't consider it protectionism. I consider it really acknowledging the many smart investments that we have made to this area of town. I have to tell you that in my background, I've done almost thirty years of commercial development and have been involved in it. And in many municipalities, you see great things happening and there's a synergy that is created. And I think with this downtown area, we see those very synergies taking place. We know that an area has really achieved success when you have all these factors working for it. Right now, we have a wonderful entertainment district that has amazing restaurants and bars and the theater itself is a wonderful complement to that. We have very limited retail, the small boutique retails and some of the retailers have been there for many years, but that's the extent of it. And I see that now we're engaging in some residential developments and some of the buildings are going to be converted into condominiums and lofts, which is great, but we're not there yet. And I think in many cases with the restaurants and bars, we know that they need the traffic, they need the constant traffic to be a success. And if they don't have the traffic that the current theater, the Grand, draws, what is going to happen to those current bars and restaurants? They need that traffic and we look to them to continue to thrive. What we're seeing is a slow buildup of the residential that is critical, that feeds on all of that. And my concern is that we don't have the synergies. We don't have all the critical elements in place for the Grand to continue to grow and develop. And I have to tell you that we were very fortunate to have Mr. Marcus of Marcus Theater come. And it's not often we find a company or a corporation that is willing to not only invest in this area but invest in other areas of the city because they see that we are willing to commit to this investment in an area that is growing and developing rather than allowing some other elements throughout the city to alter that delicate balance. So I am not going to support this comprehensive plan amendment. I think it's premature. I think if you really had an overwhelming interest, like we have seen in other retailers wanting to come to the city of Lincoln, you would have that retailer or that theater eager to bring forth their concept or their idea and really be willing to work with the city on changing the comprehensive plan, changing the zoning, changing the use to allow that. But there's no one out there because it is a tremendous investment.
Roy.
I don't want Lincoln to appear to be open and welcoming to new businesses. I want Lincoln to be opening and welcoming to new businesses. This is a protectionist ordinance that is in place, a plan that protects certain people and certain people's investments. I get it. But it is not the business of government to pick the winners and losers among businesses. There is no way that I can be convinced that our city is better off for having this policy in place because we have no way of knowing how good it could have been without it. So I really, as everybody knows, feel passionately about this. I think we should remove this policy as an impediment to growth and development in Lincoln.
Trent, then Cindy.
The one thing that I like about this, because one of the arguments that has been raised is predictability in business cycles. I think the one thing that I like about this is that there's a five-year sunset and that we are backing off of a policy and giving businesses a time to adjust. And to the statement that things are somewhat fragile in business, God, welcome to the real world. It's always fragile in business. You may never know when something's going to change in your line of business that affects your bottom line. And by protecting one of these businesses with an ordinance, I feel like we're doing the wrong thing. I had an opportunity to sit with the developer of South Point a few days ago and learned that back in the nineties, South Point could have had a multiplex theater. That would have been a really great thing for South Point. That would have been a really huge draw for them. But the downtown theaters were the ones that kind of shut that off, even though it was the same operator. I also take somewhat of exception to the argument that the downtown theater is lifting up businesses that are surrounding it via bars and restaurants. Because, and while there's some of that that is true, what we're seeing from Marcus is they're trying to pull every dollar that they possibly can into their own doors, from offering pizzas and calzones and expanded food menu. That's where that industry is going, where you can find everything that you possibly can inside one doors and sit in a recliner and eat all of it and watch a movie. That is a great competitive marketplace to be in and that is a great product to offer this community. And that may very well be where the Grand goes from here, is offering a product like the Drafthouse Alamo does up, you know, up fifty miles, up by eighty. So, you know, I think it's time to set the clock and expire this. That's how I'm going to vote. I appreciate Roy bringing this forward. Yeah, business is tough and the strongest survive. And, you know, sometimes things change. But I think we would be doing the city the right thing to move this forward. And I don't know about you guys, I'm going to continue to come down to the Grand to go to movies. And, you know, I think that's what the rest of the community should do as well.
Cindy.
Thank you. So while we were hearing testimony, well, first let me start back. When I ran for office, the very first, nearly the very first door I knocked on, people were saying, wait a minute, let's stop spending all this money and all this attention and all this protection for downtown. We've done that long enough, downtown is doing great. And now it's time to just release, and this policy in particular was a topic of conversation. What I heard when we had the testimony was I heard a couple of things. One is I heard that there really is no other place that has a policy like this that protects the downtown theater. But I also heard, which was really important to me, that there wasn't an expectation that the Grand is going to fail. In fact, we're, like Councilwoman Raybold said, we're increasing the housing down there. We have the university students that are going to the Grand and patronizing the Grand. People in northeast Lincoln, which is my district, actually will drive to Oakview at Hundred and Forty-eth and Center to avoid the traffic or the parking, excuse me, downtown. They would, however, travel Eighty-Fourth Street, which now with Greenlight Lincoln is going to be a zip down there where there may have already been a multiplex. There was an application for an eighteenplex down there. The council only approved a sixplex and that project went away. Additionally, like Councilwoman Fellers said, the businesses that it's being touted would be propped up downtown, the theater itself is in competition with some of those. And so I believe that it is time, we don't know that if someone will come in the door tomorrow or next week or next year. But I do know that when they've had to fight for it before, it didn't happen and we don't have a multiplex. And so I am definitely going to support the change.
Carl.
I want to thank Roy for bringing this because I think it's an important and healthy discussion for us to have in this community. It's not just about downtown versus the edges of the city, though. It's about more than that. Certainly downtown is a portion of it. And having a healthy and vibrant downtown is crucial for Lincoln and for the community that we are. And the Grand's a part of that. We heard from Mr. Marcus that six hundred thousand people go to the Grand every year. And that when they go to the Grand, they also go to other places around the Grand and spend approximately twenty dollars a person going to and doing other things. And that's, you know, my math tells me that's twelve million dollars a year that's being spent by people going to the Grand. That's huge. And something that we don't want to see leave downtown at all. But what really concerns me as much, if not more, than the impact that this policy may have on downtown is what it would do to the neighborhood shopping centers. And, you know, when you look at Edgewood, for example, Edgewood is the closest one to Eighty-Fourth and Highway Two. I'm told Edgewood would close. If something went in there, Edgewood would close. And that puts a big hole in that shopping center. Not just in that shopping center, but in that part of the community. A place where families can go, where parents know their kids can go to the movie, ride their bikes there, be there and be safe. And I think, you know, what we heard from Mr. Marcus is that this is unique. This is, the policy we have in Lincoln is unique and it's worked really well for us. Doesn't mean it always has to be this way, but I think it's working very well for us now and I'd hate to see it change.
John.
Well, I need to give Mr. Fellers another history lesson in the life of John Camp. Growing up here in the fifties, going to movies, there was a theater on every corner of downtown, nearly every corner.
I think I was alive then.
In the early fifties?
Oh, no. When there was a theater on every corner, though, at least.
Whatever, they're not there now. Okay, anyway, so that's the history. And golly, it cost a quarter for everything except Disney movies were thirty-five cents for kids, so. No, what I want to say is, looking, I look at this issue a little bit broader and what is the competitive environment? And I don't view this much as a downtown policy. I'd rather leave it as a theater policy. As everyone knows, any multiplex can come into this downtown area and compete. Outside that area, within certain zoning areas, or if we waived it, you could have up to a six-screen plex. And looking at what's happened, going back to my fifties, early sixties experience, I can remember like that movie, The Unthinkable Molly Brown, waiting in a two-block line to get into the theater. It probably ran for several months. Today's movies on the first screen, it's not very long before they're into other syndication, other streams, whether it be Netflix, Redbox, Hulu and another assorted number of distribution channels. So much as we're seeing, in fact, again, going back in the fifties, I remember using Sears and Montgomery Ward's catalog to order things. Now we've gone to bricks and mortars, but now we're going back to the internet. It's an interesting way retail has changed over time. In fact, we're maybe get drones sending us our groceries, you never know. But looking at the totality of everything, I think that it's a competitive environment for different experiences. And you look at going to Redbox for a dollar fifty, you can get a movie overnight and the whole family can see that. And that's one type of experience. Now, I think going to a theater and with the reclining seats that Marcus has put in and other advancements, it's a changed experience there. And some people want that experience and you can get some of that in the sixplex screens. There was a proposal one time to put a sixplex in northeast Lincoln and I think that was maybe what Councilwoman Lamb was referring to. And unfortunately, as I recall, the demographics just didn't work for that. Another time, we did have an application to put a multi-screen in far southeast Lincoln. Toward the end of that process, it was withdrawn. And so we never did vote on that application or that change of zoning. I think as Mr. Christensen said, I'm about as free market as anyone. I think the free market, one has to look at these other distribution channels for the movie experience. And it's a very competitive environment out there. And I don't, I'm not for protectionism. But I think if we modified the theater policy, I think what you might end up seeing is two multiplexes in Lincoln and maybe one six-screen stays. And I think that hurts the neighborhood experience. And as I also started alluding to earlier, the time a movie is in its first run is not for six months like I had witnessed some theaters in my Stone Age era. And, I mean, they come and with an. Uh, and, I mean, they come and with a matter of weeks they go, and so I think, uh, while it may not be 100% possible, I think this, uh, three six-screen theaters in town do contain, have most of the first-run movies in there for the enjoyment for those people who choose not to come downtown to the multiplex. Uh, so I think the opportunities are still there. Um, I think whichever way this vote goes with, uh, whether or not it goes for the five-year sunset, or it's, it's defeated right now, perhaps during the coming years, it could be revisited and see if there is a better way. But, um, I think it has been exciting to see the Marcus organization come in and invest millions of dollars and upgrading, because they know what the competition is of it. They've got to provide a different experience than Redbox, or Hulu, and, uh, Netflix and those. So, uh, I, I understand the desire for the open marketplace, but I think it's there. And, you know, just after the first of the year, we all read about Macy's closing forty, fifty of its stores and tens of thousands of employee, it was 100,000 employees, I think, or maybe that was Sears slash Kmart that were closing, um, sixty to a hundred stores and letting off 100,000 people. So the bricks and mortar era is changing dramatically, and we're seeing more of the whole inter- internet distribution channel.
Yeah, I, I wanna echo a number of the sentiments of my colleagues, and I do appreciate the opportunity to have this discussion. It's a healthy one for our community, because we get to think about how we want to grow our city. And so, as I've been looking at this, I've been trying to look at it through the lens of what, what works best for citizens, and, uh, what do citizens have to gain if the policy goes away? And I think the only real, um, answer to that question that's been kicked around has been the idea that we might get a bigger multiplex on the edge of town. And we don't know where that would be. It might be in North Lincoln, but it might more likely be in South Lincoln. And so the benefit I see to that is that some people who happen to live near that multiplex would have a more convenient drive time. But if that new multiplex came at the expense of closing other theaters that exist in Lincoln, which is what our consultant study has indicated is very likely to happen, because we've, we're kind of at the saturation point with the number of screens in our community, then for a lot of other people in Lincoln, it becomes a lot less convenient to get to the movies, because they're having to drive a lot farther. So, in addition to that, if, if we see the, the grands, um, start to not do as well, and that brings instability to downtown, then we, we risk some, uh, hurting our local economy downtown. And I don't like to separate the economy downtown from the wider economy of Lincoln. They're intertwined and interconnected. We, we all benefit from a strong downtown. So, if the only benefit of a policy change that's been articulated has been that some people will be able to get to the movies in a shorter time, then I, I guess I don't, I don't see that it's worth the risks that, that have been indicated as, as likely risks, that is, uh, risking the success of our neighborhood centers, the closure of existing theaters, and, and potentially hurting downtown businesses. This sort of seems like a, a, a solution in search of a problem. And please call the roll.
Christensen?
I, I think since Mr. Christensen sponsored this, he ought to be able to give semi rebuttal or whatever.
Okay.
Okay. I think that there are multiple benefits to removing this policy, not just allowing for larger theaters and people, certain people to drive less. Uh, free markets, uh, create competition. Competition creates innovation. We don't even imagine right now the things that will be innovated in the future, but one thing we know for certain is that when we fear the future, we fear innovation, we fear competition, we deny ourselves the benefits of innovation.
And I guess I would just follow up on that and say that-
Don't I get the last word on it?
She's the chair.
I understand. That's my, my legislation.
If it's important to you to have the last word, that's absolutely fine, Roy. Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
No.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
Camp?
No.
Motion lost three to four. Next in is item 30, text amendment 16006, amending sections 27.63.630 and 27.06.150 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to indoor theaters, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
I'd like- Seconded by Roy, discussion?
I'd like to introduce a motion to amend number two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, seconded by Carl. Can you explain the motion to amend number two?
Um, the motion to, uh, amend number two was, uh, a cleanup of this text amendment based on the recommendations of the planning commissioners and the planning department.
Okay, discussion?
Just to clarify, what this does is means that there would be no multiplex theaters available in the city of Lincoln outside the downtown area, beyond six screens. That's what this motion to amend number two would mean. It would preserve in, in my legislation, the idea we could have small neighborhood theaters, but it would remove any possibility of changing our theater policy as far as maximum number of screens outside of downtown. As such, I just wanna point out that a, a vote for this motion to amend is a vote against allowing multiplex theaters beyond six screens outside of downtown.
Any other discussion on this item?
Yes.
Carl?
Representing downtown and north Lincoln, northwest Lincoln, uh, if there were a, a strong proposal that came forward to look at, at adding a theater in, uh, north Lincoln, I would have to, to seriously, uh, consider supporting that at that point. Uh, what I'm told by retail individuals, as well as entertainment business people, is that we just don't have enough, enough rooftops to justify that kind of, uh, investment. So, uh, again, this isn't forever and a day, but, uh, I think it's the way it is now.
Any discussion? Trent?
I, uh, I'm not going to vote for the motion to amend. Um, I go back to my previous comments on the comp, uh, plan amendment. Um, if, if you were a developer that wanted to come in and do a multiplex at any, uh, place in the city, you would do a heck of a lot of research to try to figure it out whether you could come in and compete. Now, this ordinance, or even the comp plan change that Phil before it, um, uh, doesn't guarantee that somebody's coming in. Would, would it, might guarantee that somebody could at least make the application to come in and, and try, or they might look at Lincoln, uh, but they'd still have to compete on price, they'd still have to compete on the number of rooftops, and they'd still have to compete with the only game in town. And from what I, uh, heard and even what we asked Mr. Marcus, if they had the choice of what they were gonna build, they would build a multiplex. So, um, I mean, I, uh, I recognize that, um, Edgewood, uh, and East Park are theaters that they revitalized, um, and I think those are pretty darn competitive. Um, they're pretty darn close to a lot of different rooftops in the community. Um, and when I make a decision on where, where I'm gonna go for a movie, I look at the times that they play, not how close they are to my house. Um, so, uh, I would like to see an open playing field, and that doesn't mean that, uh, things might close, but, um, you know, that's how the free enterprise system works, and if somebody builds a better mousetrap, uh, sometimes they take your cheese. So, uh, you know, that's the way it goes. I don't know if that analogy holds very well. That's a pretty terrible. Sorry. Apologize to the group.
It's okay, as long as you're not the mouse.
Exactly. Uh, but, you know, I appreciate what Roy's brought forward here. Again, I love the five-year sunset. I think it gives people time to plan and things to come forward. I think it gives, uh, people the ability to assess where things are at. And, uh, you know, like John said, nobody knows what the future holds. Um, uh, but I think this, uh, would at least give them some idea that in five years, that's, that landscape may change. Um, and I think it might change for the positive. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak before we vote on the motion to amend? Um, I would just add that we've been talking about competition, and, and competition is important, and I think what we're seeing in this industry is that that competition is coming from, from places that people didn't imagine, you know, a decade ago. We've got on-demand, um, video streaming and Netflix and Hulu and all kinds of other channels that are bringing additional competition to our market in Lincoln, so that, uh, you know, I think I would have been more open to this entire proposal if, if, if we had signs that competition wasn't at work. But the independent studies cited is that our, our pricing is competitive, our amenities are competitive, uh, the, the viewer experience, the screens are competitive. Uh, so, um, so while I appreciate the intent, uh, I, I plan to vote for this motion to amend. And one of the reasons I, you know, plan to support the motion to amend, uh, is it does, it does support what you wanna do, Roy, with the B2 and the B3 districts and allowing more niche theaters, um, that, that could offer, you know, in- increasing kinds of viewing experiences for people in Lincoln. The tangible benefit of that is, is clear, so I'm happy to be supportive of that element of your proposal. Please call the roll on the motion to amend.
Christensen?
No.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
No.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried four to three.
And now on the main, is, on the main motion.
Do I have a comment?
Go ahead.
I'll take what I can get.
Great.
Jane?
Well, I think it, I think it's great, because it does allow an opportunity for some of the smaller theaters to, to make a go at it. It is a tremendous, recognizing that it's a tremendous investment on their part to wanna come into a, a neighborhood and, and make a go of it. And I think people are looking for that experience, and, uh, this opens the door for that opportunity. So I am gonna support it with these changes.
Cindy?
So, I'm conflicted on this, because I guess you can have 18 screens go up at different places in the town, but you can't have an 18-screen megaplex, and so how does this accomplish anything?
Can I clarify that for you? Um, these single, uh, screen, or maybe dual-screen theaters will not be first-run theaters. It's just not in the cards. That's not the way the industry operates. This is, this is intended to be something more along the lines of a dinner theater in a neighborhood.
Well, I hate to run contrary, but, uh, December 31st, I saw a first-run film at a two-screen theater in Nashville, Tennessee. It was a great experience, and it was, uh, it was a, it was a theater in a community in a neighborhood that, uh, there was great neighborhood support for that theater, and it was something that was, was extremely well-attended and, uh, was, was a real asset to, to help the businesses that are there in that community. So, so my experience in that instance and, and some others, I guess, that I've seen, I think, uh, you know, I've seen some other ways. Um, certainly, you know, the, the image that we have from, from the Alamo-style theaters, where, where dining is a, a part of that, that, that would, that would be in play and would be able to do those kinds of things, uh, offering alternatives, some, some great alternatives that, uh, other communities do have that we, we don't currently.
Cindy, did you get to finish what you wanted to say, or were you, were, did, did you feel like you had a chance to say everything you wanted to say on this?
No. Councilwoman Christensen interrupted me.
Yeah. Go back to you.
But that's okay. I guess, I just feel like, okay, if, if this goes into effect, and we have all these more small theaters able to go up, we can still have 18 screens go up throughout the city. Now we have another, another report that says, no, we can't support more screens, we'll never get a megaplex, and yet, out in my district at least, we are growing by leaps and bounds. In northeast Lincoln, we have young families moving into the east of town, east of 84th Street, who are crying out for something bigger, better, more modern, and yet, we're wanting to, I understand the idea for niche theaters, but I think this runs contrary to everyone's argument against allowing a megaplex. So, I, I'm, I haven't decided, but I don't think I'm gonna support it.
Trent?
Can I ask a staff question?
David Carey with the planning department?
So, I'm developing out at 84th, uh, street, and I want to open a movie theater. Could I open a six-screen theater in one building, and then a six-screen theater in another building, and operate them under two different brands?
I'm gonna ask our in-house expert on the topic. As the code is today, excuse me, Paul Barnes with the planning department, as the code is today, it does limit the number of theaters per B5 district. So, when we look at the zoning map, each blob of B5 zoning is considered one of those districts.
Okay. So, I would just have to be in two different B5 districts?
You could have one theater in each B5 district across the city, yeah.
Okay. Which would have roughly the same effect as opening up a multiplex in one B5 district, right?
And that could happen today under-
Under, under, the, under item 30 amended with motion amend number two, right?
Yes, that will keep the B5 piece of the zoning as it is today, and won't change that.
All right, thank you.
John?
So, with, with that in mind, a, a smart planner could say, here's a B5 district, I've got a O2 in between, I've got a B5 over here, and they could have two six-screens there on either side of the O2, whatever.
Or either side of a street.
I suppose there are ways that you could go around it. Um, I think in what we've heard from the experts and what we've heard from the theater operators, that having two theaters like that, that close together is, is very difficult. Um, the industry does regulate a lot of how those can site, above and beyond our local regulations. Um, so I think that, yes, there could be a way to do that, that would be at a risk of, of those operators.
You've also hit on something incredibly important, is that, you know, in competing with some of those other theaters, um, the, how they release movies has changed so that they don't want them to be so close to each other. So, somebody that maybe locates close to East Park may not be able to get, like, this new Star Wars movie or whatever. Um, they, uh, it's a distribution rule that might prohibit them, so they may not want to be close to one of those other more regional theaters that we have.
I think Rogue One is playing everywhere. Good point. Okay. Any other-
Just using as, as an example, uh, thank you.
Any other comments? Uh, Theresa, can you remind, we, we're about to vote on the main motion then?
Correct.
All right, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Where are we?
So, we've amended it?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried five to one. Six to one.
Wait, there's, yeah, so I was-
I can't count today.
I'll have to review my math there for a minute.
All right. Item 31, amending section 27.72.080 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as amended by text amendment 16007, to delete the erroneous addition of the R1 district to the list of districts in which a decrease of the required front yard for new buildings is not allowed, even though 40% or more of the frontage along a block is developed with the front yards less than required by the zoning ordinance introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Carl, discussion? Trent?
I'm just looking for the strenuous debate on this item, uh, as we've had on the other items. Appreciate the discussion this afternoon from everyone, even though we have differing views.
I have a question, Jane. This is just a cleanup of an erroneous item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
I'm sure I'd move for adjournment.
Second.
We're, we have open-
Oh, we have open mic?
We have one more item. Um-
Mike's next to me.
Resolutions on first reading are items 32 through 45, and items, ordinances first reading are items 46 through 53. On item 53, we did have a request to suspend the rules to have public hearing and action next week. to have public hearing and action next week, January 30th. This was introduced by Christiansen.
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Jane. Teresa, could you please restate that, because there was some discussion-
Yes, the request was to suspend the rules to have public hearing and action on January 30th.
Is that something we have to vote on today, or is that something we could vote on next week?
Are you saying add it to the agenda?
No. No, just advertise that we're going to vote on it.
Right, because it's an ordinance, so otherwise, it would just have second reading next week, whereas they want to have-
Yeah, I mean, basically, you're amending your rules to have second, third reading on the same date, so you should adopt that today, if that's the way you want to do it.
But it, doesn't it pertain to only specific items? Did you call out that, or?
Just to item 53.
It's the only ordinance in the bunch.
Okay. I see. Thank you. I didn't know she called out the specific. Okay, thank you. I get it now.
So, we need a motion to suspend the rules?
I seconded it. Now, I get it. That was for the main motion.
The main motion. Now, we're going to, I'm going to move that we suspend our rules, so we can have hearing and action next week.
Correct.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion? John?
Well, I think this is an important topic, and I don't think with the holidays and everything, and discussion that's been out there, that we should run that quickly into the vote. So, I would not support this.
Jane?
I would support it, because I think it's something that we have had a tremendous public hearing. There has been tremendous public engagement on this, based on the work that the Recycle Lincoln has done throughout the city for the last two months, in gathering signatures for the petition drive to get it on the ballot. So, I think the Recycle Lincoln group and team is very supportive of this, and they feel that there has been a lot of discussion already on it.
Trent?
If I may, I view this more as a reconsideration motion, because it's something that we've had a hearing on previously. It's, and that was a pretty long hearing. So, I feel like it's more of a reconsideration of an amended proposal that we've had in front of us before. It's kind of like it's been sitting on pending and coming off pending into a regular public hearing. You've given me the eye. Thank you.
I appreciate that sentiment. I guess I'm curious if Rick could speak to whether or not we actually could do it as a reconsideration, if that's, it's, time has passed.
No, it's not a reconsideration.
But I guess what I'm concerned, so suspending the rules is a big deal, and we shouldn't just take, do it lightly. So, I don't, you know, if we don't want to see more requests like this coming forward from others, we need to be thoughtful about when we do it. If you're saying that the justification is the special circumstances of basically reconsidering something we've heard, then I think that is an extenuating circumstance that we could hang our hats on. But I don't want to signal to the world that we're, you know, we think it's a good idea to suspend our rules.
I believe. And previous to, well, Jane's predecessor had a very stringent policy on this. And I think it's kind of humorous that people tried to run afoul of it. We haven't seen that in this body. This would be the first instance that we've actually done this, and on an item that we previously heard. And I think we've all understand, you know, the issues that are surrounding it. We're not precluding anyone from coming and testifying. We're just advertising that we're going to act on the same day, and move the policy forward. So, you're free to disagree with my assessment of whether it's a reconsideration. That's just how I'm looking at it.
Cindy?
My understanding is, if something unusual came up, that we wanted to make a motion to continue it next week, we probably could. The, what this does, though, is without approving this, we couldn't take a vote next week. Is that, is that right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other thoughts from the council? Okay, all right. Please call the roll on Roy's motion to amend number one.
Okay. This is the, I'll just read it again, to suspend council rules to have public hearing and action on January 30th. Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
No.
Motion carried, six to one.
Oh, Madam Chair, I would move for adjournment.
Second.
Seconded by Jane. Discussion? Please call the roll. Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.